Meeting of the Congress Select Board for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, would you read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all, provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we may have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? All right. Ma'am, if you just step up to the microphone, please, and just identify yourself, name and address.
My name is Carol Hamel.
Right, go over, right there.
Oh, right here.
Yep.
My name is Carol Hamel.
Okay, you can have a seat. Okay, you can have a seat now.
I'm just, I got a letter in the mail about some high tension wires going in. Do I talk to you about that now or do I wait?
Is that the item on tonight's agenda? Is that...
They told me to be here.
Oh. So that's a public hearing. It's starting at 6:10.
Oh, okay.
And you'll be able to address them and ask your questions at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Are there any other members of the public? All right, seeing none. The first item on our, next item on our agenda is that 6:10 public hearing, but it's not 6:10 yet. So we will move to our next agenda item, which is an application to revise a license name for Ferraris Used Cars and Repairs Incorporated. They request then change the name of the license to Ferraris Used Cars. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf? Sir?
My name is Kevin Ferrer.
Okay, Kevin, welcome.
I live on 23 North Main Street. My family owns the salvage yard on West Street. And back in the day when we bought the license, we had a sticker station. And we sold it to Nigel Eagle Gas a long time ago. And I would just like to remove the repair off my license.
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything on that?
No, this is only a change of name. It's all, all the information is the same.
Yes, sir.
All right, no questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the name change from Ferraris Used Cars and Repairs Incorporated to Ferrer's Used Cars.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I have one question. When I buy at auctions, I have to present my license to the auction. So will I be able to have a new license because it's supposed to be done at the first of the year? Will I be able to get it? Like, so I can just give them that one instead of this one?
You will tomorrow.
Thank you, guys.
Stop in.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, too.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's still not 6:10. So, and I don't see Mr. Mackey here this evening.
He's here.
Oh, he is. Bruce, would you like to step up and we'll, we'll go to this, this item? It's the solar and battery storage bylaw decision of the Attorney General. Chair Bruce Mackey of the Solar Bylaw Storage Moratorium Study Committee is here to update us on that.
It was a good thing I came in early today.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Select Board, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the first meeting we had was August 30th. That's when we started, 2022 is when we started our first meetings. And so since then, we didn't know, we hadn't heard from the Attorney General. We did get a letter. It was dated November 14th, 2022. And it was about Article 26, which was the solar moratorium, and Article 38, which was the battery storage moratorium. And I'll just read this, this one paragraph that addresses these two articles. So it said, Articles 26 and 38. Under Article 26, the town voted to amend the zoning bylaws to add a one-year prohibition on expanding existing or creating new large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Under Article 38, the town voted to place an 11-and-one-half-month prohibition on the use of land in the town for battery storage. And so the attorney goes on to say, Attorney General says, because both one-half-month prohibition on the use of land in the town for battery stor-, I'm sorry, because both prohibitions violate Mass. General Law Chapter 48 and Section 3, and are not grounded in articulated evidence of public health, safety, or welfare concerns sufficient to justify the prohibition on solar uses, we disapprove them. So, you know, basically, they said that in the two moratoriums, they just didn't find any evidence that it was harmful to the town. So, so there are no solar or battery story, battery storage moratorium going on right now. But the committee is still continuing. And so we, we have met with, we started off with KP Law and Greg Corbo, and he explained the, that particular law, which was adopted in 1985 by the Mass. Legislature. So, so he explained what we could and couldn't do under that law. We have had meetings with solar companies, and we asked questions on where they were looking for areas in Carver to, to place their solar fields. We spoke to EverSource representatives. We spoke to them about how they connect the solar fields to the power lines along the roadways. And we spoke to the people from Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association, which Steve Ward, who's, who's on the committee, is on. And so we've had a list of guest speakers, you know, people speaking about what's, what's going on. And it's just to educate the, the members of the, of the committee. We've also had the members, they've, we've talked about a list of concerns about solar projects. We haven't yet got to those answers yet. And we're looking into a battery storage bylaw right now. We spoke about that at the, at our last meeting.
Is that something that you would be presenting for April Town Meeting?
Yes. What'll happen is, is anything that, anything that we have new for the solar or for the battery storage, we've, we have, we have three placeholders right now. One's for the solar, one's for battery storage, revisions that are in the current bylaws. And then we also have a placeholder for Town Meeting for, it's for a new, a new bylaw for, for, for the battery storage. So we're looking into, I spoke to Tom Bott this afternoon, and of course, everybody's been out on vacation and whatever for the holidays. So spoke to Tom and, and, and I know other members of the committee have looked into other towns and their bylaws. So we're kind of going to look at those, I think, at our next meeting. We also, Tom, we're going to have some, hopefully, some other guest speakers come. He was trying to get somebody about battery storage. And also, I think we have a citizen that wants to speak, and we're going to have that citizen speak about her concerns with, I don't know if it was both solar and battery, but it's, it's for one of those. So we'll have them speak. And so these, whatever we come up with, we're hoping to, we're going to run this through KP Law, any revisions we make, and before we go to the Planning Board for the public hearings. And just, just want to make sure that, you know, this is, won't be immediately turned away by the Attorney General. We like to do everything correctly so that doesn't happen. So then it'll go to the Planning Board. That's where anybody, any, any concerned citizen can come up and speak about their concerns with these things. So that's what'll happen there. And then whatever happens, any revisions at the Planning Board level will be looked at again by KP Law before it finally goes to Town Meeting. And then hopefully, well, and then, you know, hopefully, we'll have, we'll have adjustments to the solar bylaw, and we'll have made some new bylaws for the, for the battery storage. And then I think at that time, we can dissolve the committee. And then if there are anything, if there's anything further to, to be done, times that I was on the Planning Board, either the Planning Board, I used to work with the Planning Board members with the, the planner and the building inspector, and we used to run through every year any problems that we had with the bylaws or any additions we had to make to the bylaws. Because it, things need constant adjustment, at least in the times that, that I was there. So, or, so that, that could happen later on with the new Planning Board in place. The other thing they could do is you could either do it by the Planning Board, or you could, they could set up another committee to look at specific things. So that's where it stands right now. We still have some work to go. We were meeting, one meeting a month, and I think we're going to do two meetings a month now to try to finalize things and get them ready for, for Town Meeting.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in and letting us know what's going on with the committee. Are there questions from the board?
I just...
Mr. Carter?
I made a quick note here. I thought you said you, there were three recommendations, but I wrote down battery storage, solar. Is there a third, or no?
Yeah. One was, yeah, was solar, in case we wanted to change some of the bylaws. There were changes we were going to do at other town meetings that didn't pass, so we were kind of going to look at them and see if we wanted to present them for Town Meeting again. Although I hate to have too many things go to Town Meeting because it just gets too confusing, but, so we're going to look at that. And there were some revisions in what we have in the bylaws for solar batteries. I think it was in the placement. And so we're going to change that. And then the, the third one was for a new bylaw for, for energy storage. And, because we were looking at that, and I've done some research in it, and I know that we were told at one time that, and this may still be true, we still have to discuss it, but, I mean, the, like, the Cranberry Point project is a larger project, and it seems that it has to be next to power lines and, and next to the, the electric station that's there. But there are smaller fields, like in Provincetown, that don't seem to be near the power lines and, and don't, so they could be put anywhere in town. So we'll have to take a look at that and take a look at any kind of bylaw that, that, from, from other towns and, and see how that works.
Thank you. Anything else on the board?
I just wanted to add, I think that Mr. Bott was looking to try and find someone from the State Fire Marshal's Office to come talk to us about the safety.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to present all the facts so that, that people know. I know there's, there's negative things about these solar and battery, and there's, but there's also a lot of positive things. And the thing is, is that we don't have a whole bunch of choice here because the Attorney General says that we can't make it so that it's impossible to bring battery storage or solar fields into Carver. It would be against the law. So we can make minor adjustments, we can look for a new bylaw. It still has to be reviewed by the Attorney General to, to get the, get the okay, to see if it's appropriate or not according to the law.
All right. Anything else on the board? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
No.
Oh. Mr. Mackey, we appreciate you coming in and updating us.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now go back to our 6:10 agenda item, the EverSource public hearing regarding install, installation of an additional 115 KV line within the right-of-way number 240 between N-Star existing Carver substation number 726 in the town of Carver to the Kingston substation number 735 located at 136 Pembroke Street in Kingston. Other folks from EverSource here tonight?
I have the materials as well, but I can't just...
All right.
Great, thank you.
Oh, figure it out, that's good.
Can steal rhymes. Hi, my name's John Perron with Cornerstone Energy Services. And we're here tonight, it's not for a petition for the wire, it's for the grant of location to be able to put, install the, the conductors over those, over those public roads.
Okay, you know, what exactly are the conductors?
Sorry. The, the conductors are the, the electric transmission, so the electric transmission line that runs from Carver up to Kingston through, through the right-of-way. There's new conductors being installed, new electric wires being installed, high tension. And as part of that project, the N-Star needs to petition to Carver, obviously, or EverSource, I'm sorry, has to petition to Carver for grant of location to install those conductors over the public roads.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Just pull it towards you.
Yep, okay. So that's, that's the project. And what we've handed to you is what was also sent to the town. It's basically the same thing, but set a drawing showing plan and profile for each road crossing, as well as the grant of location petition.
Thank you. Are there members, are there members of the public here tonight that would like to speak? Ma'am?
No, I just want to listen. How can we look at those plans as well?
They're, they're publicly available, and we can provide plans if we need to.
If you go on your website, you guys can on website, and I couldn't find the plans. I saw that this was going to be a public address.
Okay. Is it, I don't know, wouldn't that be a Carver thing? Don't you guys, I'm sorry.
They're making copies right now.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Bogart, they're going to make some copies. That's fine.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes.
Chair, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, John, John, Jonathan Perron, P-E-R-R-O-N, with Cornerstone Energy Services. We have an office over in Plymouth.
Ma'am, you were here earlier, did you want to ask questions regarding this?
I will.
Just speak up to the microphone, please.
About your name and all that?
Yeah, yes, please do.
My name is Carol Hamel. I live at Five Pelto Lane. My, my property is on the easement. I have a question because I got a letter saying this is about high-tension construction. Is this an addition to the ones that have already started?
No. This is for, this is a petition to actually go across the public right-of-way with the wires, essentially. Go across the five streets.
Oh, just for the streets?
For the street crossings, yes. It's part of the rights that EverSource, or, yeah, EverSource needs in order to complete the line.
Okay, so the fact that they've already started it and already cleared my property has nothing to do with what you're doing tonight?
It's all still part of the same project.
So are you getting approval tonight?
From the town, yes. From the town for grant of location for the road.
To put it on the easement also?
To put it across above the existing roads.
Just the roads?
Correct.
So you didn't need to talk to them tonight about going across people, you know, in people's property?
EverSource has an existing easement that's been there.
Yeah.
I can't remember when, but...
Almost 100 years.
Yeah, it has an existing easement, unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever, but they have an existing easement. So the wires that are going in to that easement are within that footprint.
Okay, so this is, you need special, another permission to go across?
You have to get from the town, from the municipalities, you do have to get rights for a grant of location. Even if EverSource was to set a utility pole right along the road, they have to get a grant to locate, just a, like a, I mean, you know, if a new house was going in, they'd have to get permission for a pole to be installed within the road right-of-way, and that's a grant of location. That's what it's called.
I just didn't know if this was something additional to the one they're already going to be doing.
No, ma'am. It's the same, basically, it's the same project. It's just to cross, you have to get permission from the town to actually cross the road, the public right-of-way.
And you don't do that in the very beginning, huh?
It's a weird thing. It is a weird thing. You have to get, and I'm going to add a little, because I don't know the whole process, but I do know that we have to get Siding Council approval right first. We have to get approval from the state. They have to get approval from the state before they, you know, before the project, before we can even go to the towns to get approval.
Okay, Council of, start.
The poles, yes, yes.
The project is approved by the state, by the EFSB. This is just a portion of the project that we don't want to...
Do the whole thing on that kind of...
Yeah, it's weird. Yep.
Yeah, that would make, that would make a lot of sense.
Yes, ma'am.
I have some questions.
Sure, step up to the microphone, please, and just name and a, name and a...
Yes, my name's Perron Derman, and my land above is Walker Road and Center Street. And...
Miss, have a seat, have a seat.
Thank you. My concern is, like, right now, everything's been stripped away. And we're, I have an easement with EverSource, and my land, part of that's been stripped away, and a big sand pile's been broadened and flattened out. And I was told that they're going to put some kind of big transforming station there. And we already have those big giant tow, you know, wires and, and everything. And my understanding is they're going to add more structures to the whole thing. And I'm just concerned about what that will do to my property value, and also if they are going to reestablish the vegetation that they've stripped out of there. Sorry, I'm a little nervous talking publicly, but those are my concerns. Because right now, I notice that they have left the outsides of the meadow, but they have flattened everything and stripped everything else away, and I'm just wondering what that is going to look like. If they put a big transformer station in there, are they going to hide some of it? Or am I going to be looking at that and what it will do to my property values?
Does anyone from EverSource have information on that?
Hi.
Just speak up to the microphone, ma'am, and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Andrea Burton from EverSource. And anything that we do that affects your property, we will restore it to its original condition or better. And we have a commitment with you, and we will talk to you about it. We will bring in vegetation specialists, we will bring in landscape architects, we will do whatever we need to, to restore it to its original condition.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, that's...
We're at 184...
Sir, sir, if you could just come up to the mic, ma'am, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was, yes.
Okay.
Can you speak into the mic, sir?
Just identify yourself, sir.
Roy Dawes, 184 Center Street. We're at the corner of Walker Road and Center Street.
Wapping Road.
And it looks to me like the new lines, the towers for the new lines will be next to the old towers, if I'm not mistaken. That's what it looks like.
For the most part, I would agree with that, yes.
But across from our driveway, we have three acres right there at the corner of Walker Road and Center Street. It looks to me like they've cleared out a space. I don't know if it's just a staging area, but there have been some talk that there's going to be a transformer or some sort of way station there. And so we're concerned about that. And I don't know, you can tell...
And you live in Carver, obviously, and Center and Wapping. And is this the same one you're talking about? This, you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. The only thing, Mr. Chair, is I didn't want to take up time addressing right-of-way issues when this meeting is really about the five streets we want to cross.
I understand that.
So I could, I am available to speak to any butter after the meeting if that's...
Okay, can you, can you exchange contact information?
I certainly can.
And get back and...
I certainly can.
Okay, thanks.
Does that work for you?
Mr. Chair?
I didn't know if you were able to tell us...
Could we just have this lady from EverSource just tell us, is a transformer going to go there in that location?
I'm not sure.
I gotta see the location.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of a transformer in Carver, so we'd have to see the location where you're talking about.
All right. Could you please get in touch with our town administrator?
Absolutely.
And follow up with that and let him know?
Mr. Fantasy.
So we can inform the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board here regarding this? No? Is that it? All right. Are there questions from the board?
I have a few. Okay, so I know we're here about the wires, but just looking at the, the plans, I had a few questions. I know that there are existing monopole structures going from Carver to Plymouth now, and there is space to one side of them. So I'm just wondering why all new structures are being put in instead of using the side of the monopoles that doesn't currently have wires on it?
So we answered that, we, not me, because I don't, I'm not positive of the answer. I can ad lib it and give you my best guess from, from what I understand, but there is, like, testimony for that from this, you know, as part of the EFSB approval, there is testimony. My understanding was that, yes, there's two arms, right? One of them holds something towards the inside and one of them holds nothing.
Right.
And from what I understand, it has to do, something to do with reliability to where you can't have, you can't have a degree of reliability if you have both sets of conductors, both sets, on the same structure. So two separate structures that way there, if that one structure goes, like, one of the structures goes down or fails or whatever, you have a separate circuit and you could, you have better reliability. Now, I'm winging that. There is testimony that talks to that. I would have to find it, but that's, that's my understanding.
So the reliability aspect, if you think about a big storm coming... So the reliability aspect, if you think about a big storm coming through, wiping out.
You have to speak into the mic.
Yeah, if you could just come up.
I apologize.
Just identify yourself for the, for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Parsons, and I work with John at Cornerstone, and I actually put together the grant of location package, and so our focus really from the right of way perspective was to be able to cross those roadways with the structures that are currently in place. The reliability aspect comes into play when you think about, you know, we've all seen storms, and we're gonna see a lot more, maybe next week. Things will go down with wind, there will be branches that fall in the way. This creates that alternative circuit to switch over to, so that people aren't without power for three or four days following a storm event, and we've all been there. I mean, last, last fall was nuts in Plymouth and Cape Cod, and so, so that, that is, that is the, the.
So it's a reliability issue.
The intent, it's a reliability issue, ultimately.
So, do you know why the new structures going in are not the monopole type?
I'm not the per, I'm not the expert in the engineering of this, and I'm not the expert in the project. I'm not even an Eversource employee, I work for Cornerstone specifically on rights, but as somebody that's worked in the utility field, this type of, I, I know that our colleagues are happy to answer those questions, if we wanted to break it down a little bit in more detail and, and provide more information.
Just because piggybacking off of their concerns, you, the new structures being proposed are just like way more noticeable, so I just noticed that on the plans.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, and then I guess my, my third question is, the roadway construction plan, I know it mentioned having, you know, the little dot for police officers. If we approve this, can we condition that Carver police officers are definitely offered the details instead of using flaggers? Because I've seen flaggers in other communities, so I'd like to guarantee that the Carver Police Department is offered those details first.
Good evening, back again, Ryan Earl, Community Relations Specialist at Eversource. Yes, our process is that we call the police department, and if the police department cannot fill the, the detail, then we'll use flaggers.
And that's a guarantee?
We'll make sure that that process is followed for this, yes.
Because I have seen them in other communities, and it's like I'm seeing them more.
Yep, and that's deals that we've worked out with, and conversations we've had with other municipalities, and I'm happy to sit down with the police chief to discuss that as well, to make sure that that's happening.
Let's make sure that our police department is offered.
But what he said was he'll make sure the process is followed, so if the police department isn't able to provide detail, then they'll have to use.
But I want to make sure that.
That's up to the police department's discretion, if they would allow us to do that.
Right, let's go to the police department first, and then to flaggers.
Yep, that's the process we follow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Earl. Anything else?
I just, yeah, if I could, since people don't have a copy of this, I just wanted to read the locations where these are going.
Sure.
It's, it's pretty brief. So Main Street at a location approximately 1,000 feet southeasterly of the intersection with Silva Street. Silva Street at a location approximately 800 feet easterly of the intersection with Main Street. Surrey Drive at a location approximately 100 feet westerly from Johns Pond Road. Center Street at a location approximately 800 feet southeasterly of the intersection with Plymouth Street. Plymouth Street at a location approximately 900 feet westerly from the intersection with Godfrey Circle, and High Street at a location approximately 500 feet easterly from Brook Street. So it's basically six locations.
Yeah, thanks.
I think I said five, sorry about that.
That's okay. No, I, I just wanted people to know where it was going.
All right, is there anything else from the board? Mr. Fantasy, you have anything to add?
No.
And again, we're simply voting on crossing roadways, correct?
Correct.
Correct. But just want to confirm that for the board, that's all. Do you have anything further to add?
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion from the board?
Yes, I move that we approve the installation of an additional 150 KV line within the right of way 240 between N-Star's existing Carver substation, number 726, in the town of Carver, to the Kingston substation, number 735, located at 136 Pembroke Street, Kingston.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming in this evening, and you'll get that information that the abutters asked for, get that contracted. Thank you.
Greedy.
All right, next this evening is representative from the Earth Removal Committee to update us on Great Meadow, the Great Meadow Neighborhood Wells. Do we have someone from the Earth Removal Committee here with us this evening? Mr. Fantasy, was someone?
No, there, somebody was supposed to be here, but I don't see anybody in the audience.
All right, do you have any update on the Great Meadow Wells?
Other than they've, it seems to be subsided, the issues, they were taken care of by the, the contractor, so I haven't heard anything.
Can you follow up with the Earth Removal Committee, please?
I will.
And get an email out to the board, and, and if we need to, let's schedule them for the next, the next select board meeting. Mr. Hoppen?
I know that, I went to the Earth Removal Meeting, and this was discussed, obviously, I'm a resident of Great Meadow, so I have a little interest in this as well, but they did stop the pumping, and since the pumping of the water, we haven't heard of any other issues with the, with the wells right now.
Okay.
And I know that the company, Ryco, did meet with some of the neighbors the following day, some concerns they had about the project with sand and dirt, and they're gonna help them out on that as well.
Okay.
The last we heard was probably July, mid-July, this project will be done, so everything seems to be going, not going, so far, so good.
Okay, so we, so we may not need an additional agenda item at the next meeting, but if you could follow up with them.
I'll follow up and see what they, if they have anything else, but thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Hoppen. All right, next is a discussion and possible vote regarding the town joining multi-district litigation on PFAS contamination and retaining legal counsel to represent the town in the litigation. The board has held multiple executive sessions over the last several meetings, and discussed various, interviewed various attorneys, and discussed the hiring of, of those firms. Is there a, is there a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the board vote to appoint Napoli Schkolnick attorneys to represent the town in multi-jurisdictional litigation against suppliers and manufacturers of PFAS and related substances, and to authorize counsel to take such actions as it deems necessary to advance the town's interest in said litigation, including but not limited to entering an appearance and filing pleadings on the town's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is a discussion of a proposed housing development on Ediville property off Pine Street, reference assessors map 87 parcel E1 and map 87 parcel 1. Do we have representatives from Ediville here regarding this? Welcome, folks. Mr. Bott, if you would like to join us for this discussion as well?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter is recusing himself from this discussion. Mr. Fantasy, prior to discussing this, this development, would, would you, or perhaps if you prefer, Mr. Bott, just update the board on the, on the nature of this type of proposal?
Okay, so this is a 40B proposal, and 40B is a state law that makes at least 10% of a community's housing stock affordable of a medium or moderate income households. The 40B allows more flexible zoning bylaws, and must be at least 20% of the housing that's proposed. 40B does not allow developers to override state or federal regulations or laws, including state and federal environmental protections. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Bott, who's very well informed of 40B projects from his days in Falmouth and Kingston, so.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fantasy. I'm Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Carver. Massachusetts general law chapter 40 is passed in 1970s, based on a housing crisis in Massachusetts. That crisis, to many, remains unavated today, in needing, having adequate housing to support a viable economy in the future, for places for people to work. And as, as Mr. Fantasy pointed out, if a town doesn't have 10% of the housing stock in their town, deed restricted is affordable, then they're subject to a 40B, where a developer can come in and override the local zoning and create additional housing units, more than your zoning would provide, provided at least 20 to 25% of those are affordable. The process works as, with the applicant applying to the state, to one of the subsidizing agencies, for a site approval. So if they bring their package to the state, one of these state agencies, there's four of them, and that state agency provides a site approval letter, then they're permitted to apply to the town. So when they go to the state and say, we'd like to do this 40B in this town, that state agency sends that information to the town and says, we have this applicant who's looking at this, this particular development, and the town has 30 days to reply back in that comment period about their concerns regarding a 40B. After that local comment period is done, the subsidizing agency eventually makes a decision, and at that point, the applicant can make an application to the town. From the date they make that application, the ZBA, and this is a permit that goes to the ZBA, they're the one-stop permitting for, for affordable housing. So they make an application to the town, and the town has 30 days to open a hearing. After they open the hearing, they have 180 days to render a decision, unless that period is extended by mutual consent of the developer and the ZBA, and then when the ZBA closes the hearing, they have 40 days to render a decision.
Okay, so I could just stop you, just for purposes of, I think we have a lot of members of the public here who are interested in this, so if, and this is just an informational meeting tonight, but if this was to become an actual proposal and go to the ZBA, the ZBA would hold a public hearing.
Absolutely.
Correct, where members of the public could voice their concerns?
Yep.
And get answers, correct?
Yes, correct. And nowhere in the statute is this required or named. When an applicant comes to the town, it's at their own volition, it's because they want to, you know, identify those issues prior to. It's a very good move to have that communication early on, because the timeframes are very tight after an application is filed. So there's a lot of developers who, not say a lot, but there are developers who aren't gonna come to the town at all, they're just gonna submit things to the state, and the town's gonna find out about it when they get that site approval letter. So having this opportunity to have that discussion sort of early on, just sort of lets folks know we're gonna have to, you know, that something could be coming, and we need to sort of get our ducks in a row to make sure that we're in a position to have those comments for what might, we want to make comments to the state, and, because that process goes pretty fast after someone's allowed to make that application.
And I didn't want to interrupt you, I just wanted to make it clear to any residents either here or watching on television, or that find out about this, in whatever manner, that there will be an opportunity for residents to attend a meeting on this and, and voice their concern.
Absolutely. You can't do it without a hearing through the ZBA.
I'm sorry, please continue.
So, as I said, those are basically the, the dynamics of this. The state is cognizant of the fact that towns shouldn't be overwhelmed by the size of a 40B, so there are parameters for how many units of 40B, a maximum number of 40B units that can be built in a town. In the case of Carver with under 5,000 housing units, that's capped at 200 units. A ZBA could deny an application over 200 units, but at the same time, they could approve one. You just can't impose, and I use the word impose in quotes, something larger than that 200 units. And there are a couple different versions of 40Bs. There are homeownership 40Bs, and there are rental 40Bs. When you do a homeownership 40B, 25% of those units that are created are affordable, and they go on the subsidized housing inventory, and the subsidized housing inventory is that chart that the state keeps to say, is a town at 10% or not? So if you have 100-unit development, it's a 40B, it's ownership, 25 units will be added to your affordable housing inventory. If it's rental, irregardless, or regardless, depending upon your grammar, remission, regardless, if you do an affordable rental, 100% of the units are counted towards your subsidized housing inventory. So if you did 100 units of homeownership, you add 25 units to your subsidized housing inventory. If you did 100 units of rental, all 100 units count, even though you're only gonna get 25 units in actual affordable housing. It's sort of a carrot, I think, that the Commonwealth has put out there to say, because there's such a need for rental units, that we're gonna make some incentive for a town to consider approving rental in order to maximize the number of affordable housing units that you get. So presently, Carver is at about 3.2%. The math is essentially about, the town needs about 344 units in order to get to that 10% and provide what they call safe harbor, so you could have enough units to say to somebody who came along with a 40B that the town didn't want, they could deny it because they're in that safe harbor. So the thing about rental versus homeownership, to get to that 344 number, if, if that was the town's goal, you could get to that with one very large housing, apartment development. If you were gonna do it strictly on homeownership, you'd essentially have to create, what was my number that I had here? 1,376 new housing units in order to get 25% affordable, to get you to that number. So that's why the state has that carrot, I think, of giving you credit for all, all the units for a rental development. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, it goes pretty fast, and at the end of the day, a lot of developments, permits from planning boards and ZBA's, if they're appealed, they go to court. In the case of a 40B, they don't go to court, they go to the Housing Appeals Committee. The Housing Appeals Committee was created by the Commonwealth to review appeals for 40Bs. So it's a quicker appeal period as well, and the Housing Appeals Committee isn't a judge, it isn't a court, their job is to look at creating affordable housing units. So you always want to have the best deal you can get when you're dealing with affordable housing development, because at the end of the day, you, there's, you, you only got so much leverage for these things, so having this initial conversation is a great place to start, and then communicate, continue that communication throughout the process is really the best way to try to negotiate and, and deal with approving, permitting 40B developments.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Bott before we go on with the presentation? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bott. Folks? Yes?
Is this close enough to the microphone?
No.
No, probably not.
All right, I'll sit down. Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come in tonight, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bott, helping people understand. My name is John Deli Priscoli. A lot of you know me, I'm the owner of the Ediville property and have been for, closing in on 25 years, hard to believe, but in any case, that's where we are. So I've asked to come in, and I, I just want everybody to know that I, on this proposal and what I'm proposing, and what we're putting forth tonight, is done on what I can, what I would like to do is a very collaborative effort, as Mr. Bott pointed out, but a collaborative effort with the town, so there's a lot of input from the town leaders and stakeholders in the project. I like, I think it's better because the town gets a lot more, and the developer has soundness in the permitting, and I think it's just a much better approach, and this is a very unique project, as, as you see as we lay it out tonight. As you mentioned, this is just an informative meeting, and this is to share information and to give you some scope of what we're talking about. There's no votes being taken, there's no, there's no approvals being given, this is, this is to bring the town into the discussion mode and to see how we go forward in a collaborative way, which is what our wish is, is not the wish that, that a lot of people just send the stuff into the state, you know, we're much more interested. This is a very unique property, no matter where I travel in the country, everybody knows about Ediville, not everybody knows about Carver, but they know about Ediville, so Ediville's become synonymous with Carver over the decades, and over this, you know, it's almost 80 years now it's been there, if, for those of you that can, can imagine that. So what I'd like to do, just to follow along, because, Mr. Chairman, I, before I introduced the first board and my team, I thought maybe what I could do is give the small plans to each board member, and then I'd like to turn the board, turn the board to the public.
That's great, I was gonna ask that very same thing, I think that's a great idea.
So let me do that.
Can I fold it to the first page, so that we can follow up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to share that?
I need it for the record.
So if it's okay, I'd like to talk to the audience. This is best I can kind of like halfway between.
Maybe pick up the mic.
Hold the mic. This one here?
Yeah.
Does it come out? Hold the whole. Hold the whole.
We'll just move the.
You need one of those wireless.
Try wireless.
It's coming. Can we just?
Oh, there we go.
That's it.
Hold on.
Mr. Senesi, I'd just like to point out that this is another reason why we need to upgrade the Town Hall technology.
We are working on it. Coming.
So tonight, I wanted to start by saying and familiarize the folks with the locus of what we're talking about and, yes. Oh.
Oh, sure.
We were here five minutes ago.
Check, check. One, two.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. That's much easier. So once again, I'd like to explain to the audience, and also I don't want to be turning my back on the board, but I'm going to try to get it so everybody can see.
That's just fine.
The Ediville property that you're familiar with, that everybody's familiar with, is down here in Pine and Rochester Road. Ediville's been there since the 1940s and has been a combination of agriculture and basically a homegrown theme park. Over the years, and my involvement started in Ediville in 1999, when we took over Ediville, for those of you that have been here and longtime residents know how Ediville looked at the time, it was very tired and nobody had invested in it in quite some time. And we took the property on, and over the years, we've improved upon it. And back in 2014, we embarked on a national character there, Thomas the Tank Engine. And we kept, we rebuilt the whole park, and we've come to the conclusion that the Thomas and that whole concept really has not worked. Our partner unfortunately did not follow through, our branding partner. And COVID really hurt us. We were closed. We were the last person the governor left open, if you can believe it. So it's been a very challenging few years for Ediville. Last year, we had a little bit of a cryptic opening with Christmas only, but we stepped back and we said, "Look, we have to think about reinventing Ediville, and how do we go forward, and how do we make Ediville permanent, and how do we, how do we make sense out of this property?" And also figure a way to manage the open space related, and also potentially do some housing, and do it all under, at one time. So we've decided at this point to turn Ediville into Christmas only, since Christmas was always 70% of Ediville's business, 60 to 70% over the years. We've decided to turn Ediville into Christmas only. So, and with that concept, and those of you that have been there, have seen Thomas Land and all the investment there, it's going to be turned into something like you see in Europe, which is a Bavarian Christmas market, like they call Kris Kringle Mar over in Europe. And Heather's real, with all these crafters and people selling wares and things, that would make it a very unique Christmas experience for families. And really focus and put all our efforts into that Christmas holiday, starting in November, working through the end of December. We would hold certain potential special events off-season, but Ediville would not be open year-round like it used to be, or during this night of the year like it used to be. It would just be, Christmas would be our entire focus. So that's the concept with Ediville, and that we feel would be the best for Ediville's longevity, because I want to see Ediville survive. I want to see Ediville go forward. So with that in mind, this property here, I'm going to speak to the audience. This property here that you see is a miniaturized version of the 200-plus acres, 260 acres, Arthur, what do we have, 260 altogether? And if you look at this little green spot here, that's the current, part of the current parking lot at Ediville, and it's all been modified over the years. And our concept is to take a piece of that parking lot and introduce this housing concept and put the railroad back to where it used to be in the original right-of-way, which works perfectly with this plan, leaving Ediville here on this gray area. And along with that, opening up this open space, which is a big part of Ediville too, opening that up both for the use here for the residents that would be living in our development, but also potentially opening this up for the town residents. Those of you that are familiar, there's a major 600-acre reservoir back here called the Atwood Reservoir, and we owned all, we owned all the land around it up to this point here. The rest of it was owned by Makepeace and now is owned by DCR, which is the state. This is the missing component, and we're proposing here that we would put this in as an open space component to offer people the ability to take long walks. It's two miles each way, so it'd be a four-mile round trip. Bicycles, canoes, kayaks, and those type of things, all passive recreation, no motorized, as part of this. So there'd be a big open space component that would be permanent open space, and a CR would be, which is a conservation restriction, would be placed on it, and the development would be in this small piece here. And then Ediville, as we know it, would be remained, and that's all the developed of Ediville. The area where this green is, is partially parking lot and partially where there's two unfinished rides that never got completed, and they would be demolished, and this development would be built. But before we get into all that, and actually the pictures of the development and all the different components of it, I thought it best, Mr. Chairman, to introduce my team so we can go through this methodically, and I think that would be very helpful.
I got an excellent idea.
And so with me tonight is Lynn Sweet. Lynn is the 40B expert, sitting right here. It was Bob Mashad. Okay, Bob Mashad over here, our traffic engineer, because that's always a concern. Scott Richardson from Gorman Richardson Architects, and Scott Goddard, our environmental consultant, and Arthur Borden, our civil engineer. So tonight, I would like to lead off, and then we'll get into all the other boards and as the different presenters go along, and then I'd be happy to close with questions and so on. But I just want, I just want to stress this one very important point. I would love this to be a collaborative effort. There's a chance here to solve a huge need of affordable housing and also, and also give the town complete control over its destiny. This is a one chance to do it right here, all at one time, work together, get open space, valuable open space, opening up hundreds and hundreds of acres of land for the public and the residents. Keep Ediville alive indefinitely, and keep that as a Christmas, and make that the best Christmas attraction in the country. So I really feel there's a lot of things going there that could work in the town's benefit, and I'm glad you're allowing me to come in on a workshop basis to explain this. Thank you. Lynn?
Good evening. Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group. I'm based in Wellesley, Massachusetts. Very familiar with your planner, Tom Bott. We've worked together before. I'm really happy to be here, and I have a couple of handouts. One of them is basically a slideshow that has a process on it. And the other is actually a DHCD handout, which has the entire friendly 40B process. So I wanted to, so hopefully, if the conversations continue to be positive, what the development team will be doing is coming back to the Board of Selectmen and asking the Board of Selectmen to take a vote to actually sign the application and provide a letter of support for the application. So a friendly 40B is one in which the town signs the actual application through their highest elected official, and the application process itself goes to the Department, Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, and that is called the subsidizing agency. And the request to DHCD by the development team is for what's called a project eligibility letter, often referred to as a PEL. And that, along with an actual application and a letter of support, the development team is going to be putting together plans, financials, an affirmative marketing plan, a whole list of documents that are going to go into the state. And basically, the state will then hopefully approve the application as being complete, and then they will open up a 30-day comment period with the municipality, and that's the first time the municipality will have an opportunity to comment on the application. If, again, we continue down the friendly 40B path, the state will also commission an assess appraisal of the property, and the state will set up a site walk for the development team and for any members of the Carver staff or other boards that want to attend the walk, and the public is also certainly welcome, but it's the first time for the state to come down and see the site, see where the buildings may be, see where the public space is going to be, and just acclimate themselves while they're going through their review process. At the end of the day, the state has seven findings that it needs to make when it reviews a project eligibility application, such as, does the developer have site control? Do the numbers make sense? Do the buildings fit in the architecture within the surrounding area? And so is this site appropriate for affordable housing? Typically, the project eligibility letter from the state should take 60 to 90 days. This is a rather large site, between how many applications are in front of the state right now, short-staffed, like, you know, kind of everywhere, and having to order the appraisal, I would expect them to take more than 60 to 90 days to review it, probably more like 120. But again, within that process, the town has its first official ability to provide comments, again, through you, through the highest elected official in the community. Should the state issue the PEL, the project eligibility letter, as Tom alluded to, and your counsel, that gives the developer a ticket, if you will, their project eligibility letter, to allow the developer to apply to the zoning board of appeals for an actual comprehensive permit, and the zoning board of appeals is the main permit-granting authority. So for example, this site has wetlands, so the developer will be applying to the state for its wetlands permits. However, your local conservation commission will be reviewing the project for it. So there will be a public process in front of the conservation commission that might be happening at the same time that it is going through the zoning board of appeals. You know, likewise, this project is, I believe, a public, going to have a public water source, it's going to have sewage treatment facility, presumably. Those are going to be, those are going to be permitted and regulated by the state. So the developer's going to come to you, to the zoning board of appeals, for any, any local permits that, you know, that it needs. So there is a wonderful tool available to municipalities that have not done 40Bs before, and that is that the Mass Housing Partnership grants municipalities a consultant, and they will provide up to $15,000 per municipality. I am actually a 40B consultant for MHP, so when I'm sitting on your side of the table, I will, once somebody's filed a comprehensive permit, I will come in and do a training to the board and all of the department heads about the 40B process, and sit beside the zoning board of appeals during the comprehensive permit process, help the town hire, for example, peer reviewers, you know, and just be an extra person at the table. So that is an option available to you as a municipality to get that technical assistance fund from MHP, not at this stage, but at the comprehensive permit stage. And usually, that amount of money is enough to kind of get, you know, get through a hearing process and a training. And so what somebody does actually files with the ZBA, as Tom alluded, is it's a pretty fast process to get to the first hearing, again, with a friendly process. I mean, we filed a comprehensive permit with the ZBA the week before Christmas or something like that, and we basically said we have no problem getting an extension on the 30-day hearing date. We know that it's the, you know, a bad time of year. Let's put something on the calendar in late, in late January. So even though you're supposed to have a hearing within 30 days, what's short about it is that you have to distribute the application within seven days, and that's in my little PowerPoint. Then you have to notice it within 14, and then have the hearing in 30. So with, again, with a friendly process, you know, the developer can, you know, actually decide with the ZBA what, you know, what is the right day for that. Typically, or, you know, under the statute, there's 180 days for the ZBA to hear the permit, about six months. What, you know, at that point, we're at a public hearing process, as was stated, all of the direct abutters will be given notice within, that are within 300 feet of this development, which will be interesting to figure out with such a big site. And basically, the developer, the town has the ability to ask the developer to pay for peer reviewers. So if the town, the ZBA wants to hire someone to review all of the stormwater management plan, the ZBA will get a quote for that, ask the developer to put money into a pot to pay for that. If the ZBA wants to have the traffic study peer-reviewed, same thing, they'll get quotes for that. The developer will put, I'm spending all John's money here. So basically, the major things that sometimes are outside of the expertise of the zoning board of appeals or the town staff, there will be an ability to have peer reviewers, you know, kick the tires on those really, really important matters. And it's not at the expense of the ZBA, it's the expense of the developer. Presumably, you do want to get quotes, you do want it to be reasonable, it's not, it's not a blank, you know, checkbook by any means, there's, you know, rules around that. And as part of the developer's application, they may, we may be asking for some waivers of local zoning bylaws, whether, and in particular, one for this is going to be density. You know, we know that the number of units that are being proposed are more than are allowed as of, as of right. So a lot of the beginning and the ending of the zoning board of appeals hearings is going to be talking about waivers and then eventually conditions. And so to the extent a project eligibility letter issues, and we go to the zoning board of appeals, and a comprehensive permit issues that has, you know, conditions on it, those conditions may be construction hours between these days, you know, not on Saturday night or, you know, Sunday morning kind of a thing, you know, at a very, very basic level, or that you need to get your wastewater treatment permit from the state or your, you know, your well permit. The comprehensive permit itself will have, you know, a lot of conditions on it that is really the roadmap for the town and the developer moving forward. So it's like a special permit on steroids, is really the way to look at it. And so then, interestingly enough, once the developer gets their comprehensive permit from the zoning board of appeals, they actually go back to the subsidizing agency, which under a friendly 40B is back to DHCD, and they go to DHCD with their construction loan commitment, with a final affirmative marketing plan, their final plans, their final numbers, and they go back to DHCD and say, you know, "We're basically ready. Will you give us final approval?" And at that point, the state issues something called a regulatory agreement, and that regulatory agreement is what documents the affordability on the project going forward. So the state is really never leaving. You go to them at the beginning, you go to them for final closing, and interestingly enough, after the project is built and occupied, you go back to the state again for something called a cost certification. There is a profit limitation for a developer on a rental project, and every year for 15 years, the state is going to look at that profit limitation. The state is also going to require that the affordable units, once a year, that there's an income certification for the people that are living in those affordable units. So you're not just going out on this on your own, there is somebody else that is kind of going to be the eyes and the ears and the monitor on the affordability. So generally, and the rest of the team is going to go into this in more details, the current proposal on the table is for 336 rental units in seven residential buildings and a clubhouse. And as John mentioned, extensive public open space, walking trails. The parking proposed today is 512 parking spaces or 1.64 per unit. But the majority of the units themselves currently as planned are one-bedroom units, so 182 one-bedroom units. Tom, I will get you a coffee, I'm sorry. I'll email you in the morning. 119 two-bedroom units and 35 three-bedroom units. Chapter 40B is a family housing program, and it does require that 10% of the units be three-bedroom units. So we have just done the minimum for that. So under that count, with 182 one-bedroom units, more than 50% of the units are one-bedrooms. So we are comfortable, and I'm sure Bob can talk to it a little bit more, with our parking allocation. My next slide is really about affordability, and I'm, you know, I'm kind of running through this really fast. So happy to answer questions when I, when I, when I, you know, stop, stop writing here. But in this particular instance, because of where the rents are, the developer has chosen for 25% of the units to be affordable in perpetuity at 80% of AMI. And that's 80, 85 units of the 326. The breakdown on that is 46 one-bedroom units that will be affordable, 32 bedroom units, and nine three-bedroom units. The state also does grant municipalities the ability to have something called a local preference. So when the developer goes to lease the affordable units, they put together a affirmative fair marketing plan that the state approves. And the state allows 70% local preference for those 85 units for someone who is currently a resident in Carver, currently working in Carver, or has a school-aged child in Carver. So that is somewhat of a little bit of a reward for a municipality that if a municipality takes someone to court, they can't get that local preference. So in a friendly process, we will help you with paperwork to get that 70% local preference. And all of the units, as Tom mentioned, under a rental project would be counted on your subsidized housing inventory as soon as the comprehensive permit is actually filed with the clerk and the appeal period runs. It actually goes right on your SHI for a year. And then once the building permits issue, it'll, it'll be there permanently. But this isn't just for 15 or 30 years, this is a permanent affordability restriction. Something that's important to the state is when you look at the units from the outside of the unit or the inside of the unit under a rental project, every unit is going to look the same. Because an affordable unit might be unit 1B today, and if the person living there has more money and isn't eligible for an affordable unit anymore, they stay in that unit, it becomes market. And then another unit somewhere else in the building becomes affordable. So there's not going to be any distinction, this is going to be Class A apartment, you know, finishes. And whether you're a market rate resident or an affordable resident, your unit is going to look the same. I have mentioned the lottery. And, and I have mentioned the DHCD oversight as well. So that was really all that I wanted to talk about, in talking about it in the terms of the friendly 40B. The unfriendly 40B is that you would, that, that we would not get your, your, your letter and your signature on the application, and we would go to another subsidizing agency like Mass Housing or Mass Housing Partnership for that project eligibility letter. And it would be questionable how many units we would be able to apply for because of the safe harbor that, you know, that Tom mentioned. It could reduce our unit count. So.
One thing I see on your, on your slideshow here, and I think that you mentioned is, at some point, the town would do a site walk with DHCD, but that's a little bit down on the list. I think if you wanted this board's approval, I think we would need to do a site walk before then. I think we would need to.
Not, not a problem.
Even consider that, we would have to go out and do a site walk.
Terrific. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. This is more the official process, but whatever steps the board feels that it needs to take, I'm sure the applicant team will make the accommodations.
I think that comes under the, the idea of collaborative.
Absolutely.
And, and for the record, I don't like that expression, unfriendly 40B. We're looking for this to be collaborative. And I, I mean, obviously Lynn's explaining the whole process, but, but from my perspective, those, that concept has not emerged for me, as we've talked about this, you know, informally and so on, that I want this to be a collaborative, unified approach as best as we can.
Are there questions from the board for Ms. Sweet?
I have a question. So you had said if the town deems that a project this large is not in the best interest of the town or fitting in that space with the characteristics of the single-family homes, that it would become an unfriendly 40B? And is there anything that would change other than it would limit you to the 200 units instead of the 168% of 200 units that you're applying for? Would anything else change in an unfriendly 40B? That you'd only be able to get the 200 instead of the extra 136?
So, I'm not sure the way that you, the first part of the way that you explained it confused me a little bit. So, so if, if there is no positive vote by the Board of Selectmen to sign on to the application, as you stated, we would be applying for less units? And it would be questionable about how much cooperation back and forth would be because having the difference of 136 units is going to impact the economics of this project, especially in the fact, in the sense that a wastewater treatment plan has to be built for the site and, you know, public, public water supply and infrastructure and whatnot. So there may be things that the municipality wants, and I know John doesn't want me to go down this road, but I have to, that, that we may not be able to say yes to. But, you know, I don't know what those issues are. We're certainly designing this site to the highest standards. We 100% have to apply, you know, we have to apply the 10-state stormwater management principles. For example, everything at the state level we have to go through, but there may be, I don't know, I don't know what we would, what we would take off the table. You know, at this point, I don't want to go down that route since it's been so friendly. But it just, you know, it comes down to economics when you, when you have less units.
So you would go through it all, with it all, but just at 200 units?
We would, we would, instead of going to DHCD, if we don't get a positive vote from the Board of Selectmen, we would go through, you know, a subsidizing agency. The, the, it's really the zoning board of appeals that can choose to enforce a safe harbor. Obviously, if you have a vote of the Board of Selectmen, you feel like the ZBA is not going to enforce a safe harbor. It's like a better bet to go in with 336 units. Because at the end of the day, the municipality is going to have to pay to deal with that, you know, that safe harbor claim. And Tom, I'm probably doing a really bad job of explaining this. If the BOS doesn't want to sign on to the application, but they still don't feel, you know, still want it to be collaborative, then, and, and, you know, there's got to be some assurances out there that, that there's not going to be a safe harbor by the ZBA, and they're not a party to this discussion. So it's risky to a developer to start down a 40B path with too many units and with, you know, without, you know, without agreement.
Yeah, question about the project. Knowing the, the safe harbor limit is 200, why would you plan a project that is so much larger than that?
Well, the reason for the project, the reason for the project being larger is, is a number of things. First of all, it gives the town the ability to solve their whole 10% issue in one fell swoop. So it's to the benefit of the town. On my side, I could put more into the project, the infrastructure. And, and for the record, we already have a public water supply that's been developed and approved by DEP and built. So we already have done that. But we would have to do the sewage treatment there. So these, you know, density is always the issue in, in any development, whether it's a 40B or anything else. And everybody always thinks less is better. But in this particular case, if we're doing this and you're going to focus on this and we put it all in there and do the proper mitigation and everything else and the proper open space, here's a chance to, you know, to prevent somebody coming in with, as Lynn mentioned, and as Mr. Poga mentioned, Bob mentioned, the, you know, some other alternatives elsewhere, dropping these houses all over the place to the tune of 1,500 houses or whatever the number was, 13 something. This is a chance to really guide the whole process. That was our thought process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweet.
Okay, so I'd like to move on to, let's go with our traffic engineer. This is Bob Michaud.
Thank you, John. Chair and board members, for the record, my name is Robert Michaud. I'm the managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. We're based in Marlboro. Many years ago, our firm was involved with the Shaw's project at 44 and 58. So we're familiar with the community and that process. We've been engaged to look at traffic impacts of this particular project, as well as its parking characteristics, all of which will be encapsulated into a formal traffic impact and access study that will be submitted as part of the application materials. That will be done to a professional standard following Mass DOT guidance. Our firm has done literally dozens of these 40B projects throughout the Commonwealth, more than 30, actually. We've worked with John Deli Priscoli for many decades now, actually. And we're pleased to be part of a very professional, upstanding, and as John says, collaborative team. We very much are listening to, you know, this board, other boards, community members to understand concerns as they relate to transportation, traffic. Our first foray into doing that study is to first document ground conditions, what actually exists out there today. We've begun that process already, beginning in October of this year, again in November, and again in December, understanding that there are a number of puzzle pieces to understand. One of them is what happens when King Arthur's Fair is in town? What happens when Ediville Railroad is operating at its highest potential? And what happens in between during months that we would call average or typical conditions? So we've gone out on several occasions already in 2022 to document those conditions. And that's going to form the foundation of, of the study. Rather than putting this on an easel, I'll simply point out to the board, the nature or extent of that study is shown graphically in this aerial diagram. It shows the relationship of the site to Rochester Road and Pine Street. You'll see red dots on this that would indicate the primary gateways, as we would refer them, or intersections that provide access to the property. They include the intersections of South Main Street, Route 58 at Rochester Road, as well as the intersections at Tremont Street to the south that eventually lead to a connector 495. And, and of course, the Pine Street and Rochester Road intersection itself. We've gone to each one of those locations, again, in October, November, and December of this year to quantify traffic volume, flow conditions, turning volumes during those three periods that I mentioned before, as well as doing what we call automatic traffic recorder counts, ATRs, to understand the hourly traffic flow conditions, not just during peak hours, but throughout the typical day. We, as part of the study, will also be projecting how much additional traffic that this project would generate. And we've got an initial assessment of that, a high-level assessment, that is shown graphically here in a very schematic way, upper board and lower board. The upper board would present a snapshot over a one-hour period of time during a commuter period in the morning. The bottom, snapshot in the evening with, with large arrows, right? These large arrows would indicate relative to where Pine Street and Rochester Road are located in Route 58, how much additional hourly traffic we could expect at buildout for more than 300 units, 346 units, or 336, actually. And you'll see that the total number of trips that we're talking about is about 100 directional trips. And about two-thirds of that would be oriented more toward the Route 44 quarter with the balance of about a third to the 495 quarter.
Can I just interrupt you just for one minute? Can you get the board copies of these boards that you're showing us? You could send those over in email.
We certainly can. And certainly, you know, this, this is actually probably more detailed than we would ordinarily present at this stage of a project, but we think it's important to put a face on this. But we could certainly do that, Chair. So what we're talking about really is increases of anywhere from about 30 to 60 vehicle trips per hour on any particular roadway segment in Carver. And what that really looks like, if you were standing at the intersection of, say, 44 and 58, is about one additional vehicle per minute. That's the level of impact that we expect would occur, where on the 495 side of the world, it's one vehicle every couple of minutes. That will be annotated, analyzed in much more detail than what I'm describing now, but that's the face of this. We believe on the basis of what we've counted for traffic volume conditions during those three periods I mentioned, that that represents a relatively small change in the amount of traffic that would be using these primary gateways. Just by way of snapshot again, this is a histogram, a graph that would show you for each hour of a typical day, as well as days when Ediville is operating, what the volume conditions look like in the area. This happens to be for Rochester Road. You'll see that during about the King Richard's Fair conditions, as well as the period between the two events, Ediville and King Richard's Fair, that the volumes on Rochester Road in particular are less than 150 cars an hour.
Is that blue line, is that King Richard's Fair?
It is. So not surprisingly, during the high season, when Ediville is having their Christmas time programming, those volumes spike up a bit, right? But they're still manageable numbers. As John had mentioned, that programming will now be limited to Christmas time, so it will present more of an anomaly than a, than an average condition. But we thought it important to document it nonetheless. And that'll all be described in what we eventually submit to the town. In the course of trying to analyze these, these volumes, we're going to put a face on the amount of delay people might experience, both with and without the project, how much queuing might exist, and what improvements might be necessary to safely accommodate that type of traffic at each of one of those locations. From a parking perspective, we're comfortable at the planning level that what is being proposed for parking supply is right-sized, that it's not excessive relative to other similar projects in the Commonwealth. I mentioned that we've done more than 30 of these 40B projects in the Commonwealth. I've been doing this for more than 34 years. A typical parking ratio for a project like this is much closer to one and a half spaces per unit. They're at 1.6 to 1.65 spaces per unit, so it's very much in that range. We'll be certainly fine-tuned as the site plans evolve during the process, but we're very comfortable representing that the parking supply is right-sized in this particular case to accommodate the market needs of the project without being excessive. And finally, you know, we, as we would on any project, look to not only physical improvements that might be necessary at intersections to accommodate traffic, but also traffic management actions that would be appropriate to ensure that traffic speeds, for instance, are metered and manageable on area streets. It wouldn't be uncommon for a development like this to partner up with a car-sharing service that might find it valuable to place car share vehicles at a property like this so that folks who opt not to own as many vehicles per household would still have access to an automobile, et cetera. So those kind of management actions, traffic calming actions, will be documented as part of our supplemental as well. And I know John, being a very responsible developer, is not only familiar with those types of initiatives or programs, he's successfully applied them in many of his projects over the years, and I would anticipate the same case here. So with that. So with that, I'll, do I think there are any questions the board might have now?
If you could just, so you can get a board copy of those boards you have there?
Yes.
Just after the board is through with their questions, would you mind just, I don't think the members of the public that are here can see those, would you mind just turning them around and letting those folks see them as well?
Yeah, and these will be available, you know, throughout. So to the extent anyone from the public wants to see this information, it will be here available. If you can't see it, it's actually up on the board here.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Fantasy, anything? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I think we'll hand it over to Scott Goddard, and he'll speak to the next series of issues.
Thank you. Oh, perfect. I'll keep it brief. My name's Scott Goddard, owner of Goddard Consulting. I have approximately 30 years' experience as a wetland and environmental permitting expert in Massachusetts. So my capacity on this project is to understand both the environmental constraints of the site and proposed environmental impacts, and then facilitate the requisite permits that that would trigger. So initially, we've investigated the site for wetland resource areas in and around the project. There are some wetland features that are associated largely with former bog operations around the perimeters of the site. We don't anticipate any direct wetland impacts as a result of this project. They will be working buffer zones or nearby to those wetlands, but since the project lands largely on top of the existing parking facility for Ediville, that those impacts are not ones that are altering so a lot of natural landscape. So we do anticipate filing a notice of intent with the Carver Conservation Commission and going through that process, as Lynn mentioned earlier. In addition to the wetland impacts, there's other broader environmental considerations to the site. There was talk of a wastewater treatment plant that is likely to be constructed on-site that have environmental impacts as well. So all of those collectively will likely trigger, in this case, a broader umbrella review through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the MEPA program, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. That's where the Commonwealth of Massachusetts puts out public notice to other public entities, state, federal entities, that get to comment on the project through a very public hearing process to make sure that all environmental considerations are taken into account during the design and permitting process here. So I'll be spearheading these types of environmental permits at the local and state level. So that's all I'll leave you with for now. Any questions on that?
Questions from the board?
All right.
Thank you.
You want to go to Scott Richardson? All right.
So Scott is our architect, and he can walk you through the site plan and also show you the architecture of what we're proposing, and these are preliminary, and, you know, obviously open to discussion. Scott?
Thanks, John. Hello, everybody. I'm going to be starting with this site plan that you see there.
Scott, I think we all have that, so you can just show it to the public.
Yeah, no, just telling. So those of you, obviously, everybody here probably is familiar with the site. As John mentioned, we are looking at occupying the, basically, the parking area, major part of the parking area with this development. And basically, we are proposing seven buildings. Each will have about 48 units in them, three stories, and then the parking will be around each building or adjacent to each building. The railroad track will be relocated, so it's along the perimeter. There'll be two crossings of that track to enter the complex. And at this southern end of the site is where we're proposing our community building, which may or may not have a pool, but we're looking at, you know, the amenities and what makes sense for the development. Basically, the terrain is, there is elevated areas that would be adjusted. We are looking at developing some walking paths and so on within the site, and then they end up connecting to the walking paths and aspects that John mentioned earlier to bring, basically, the nature access to residents throughout the northern part of the site as well. Conceptually, again, as John mentioned, this is early design, trying to fit the optimum number of units for the development in the site. The wastewater treatment plant is going to be in this area, and the water, the current well has already exists about in this area. Generally, in, kind of responding to some of the architecture that we see in and around Carver, again, conceptually, again, I apologize for the fact that there's no context, i.e. landscaping or parking, but starting with the building. Again, a three-story building with some gable roof elements, a main entrance, and then basically a center corridor, typical layout. I won't get into the floor plans themselves, but they are in your package, I think, as well. Basically, central, single, sorry, double-loaded corridor, about 16 units per floor, three floors, and again, trying to incorporate some traditional colonial architectural elements in the buildings. Again, some breaking up the facade so we don't have, again, a big wall, if you will, and incorporating some porches and decks to, again, provide some visual relief for the building. Buildings, I should say. Part of the project, as I mentioned, is a community building. Sorry, I'm just smaller rendering here, which is the community building, which would be at that south end of the site. Pull this one down. And again, that would just be a one-story building, which would accommodate a common area, some meeting rooms, potentially some work, kind of work-from-home space, restroom facilities, a little kitchen area, and then office space as well as a pet, pet washing area, dog washing area. Again, similar architectural elements with the gable roofs and open and accessible on multiple sides for ease of access. And again, we have, potentially, if we have this community space on the side, it could open up to a patio area and then connect to the pool, a deck, and so on. That's briefly what it is. If you want to add stuff, John?
Yes, I just want to make sure that folks know, if you go to the site plan that shows the open space, it's important to note that, you know, we keep saying that this building's being built in the parking. Well, that's partially correct. It also has additional space where there were some amusement rides that were undeveloped that are going to be demolished, as I mentioned. But the question that came up, well, where's all the parking going to go? Well, 50% of the parking remains, and then there's an open field that is an event field that will be overflow parking. And when you add the event field and you add the existing parking that's remaining, it meets the existing parking that's there today without this development. I just want people to know that the parking's being addressed. So for Ediville, in other words, for the perspective of Ediville running its Christmas event, the amount of parking that will be provided is nearly identical to what's there today with this development. So in other words, the as-is conditions today will be replicated by using that overflow space on the event field, which would be converted to, you know, a pervious parking. All the parking, by the way, is pervious. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to, you know, address questions. If I can't answer it and I need to talk to one of the consultants, I'd be happy to have them respond, you know, and I would like to use this time to answer questions from the public as well, as far as the board, and hopefully move on to next steps. That's.
Other questions from the board?
Are we voting to give a support letter tonight?
No, we're not voting on any.
No, this is informational, this is just information sharing.
No, we're nowhere near being able to have a vote on.
Okay.
Are there questions from anyone?
When are we going to do the sidewalk?
Well, I think we need to schedule the site. I was going to reach out to them. What is your timeline?
Well, I'd like to do the sidewalk sooner or later. We have the weathers with us.
Yeah, it is. I'll be asking Mr. Fantasy to contact you and set up. Maybe we might need more than one date, depending on what, we can get the board together.
Or have two days in the case it's bad weather or something. And Sarah, who would you like to see to attend that on my side? Would you want there for questions on the sidewalk, other than myself, obviously?
I'd like your environmental consultant there.
Okay.
And Mr. Borden.
Okay. And oh, by the way, we are working on the topo. Arthur just didn't have it quite finished for the open space topo. I just want you to know that is on the list, and hopefully we'll be able to supply that at the sidewalk at that time. And we can, it's going to be quite a bit of walking, because if you're going to do all the open space and everything else, it's planned for a little bit of time. It's not a quickie thing. That's why having nice weather and not snow in the ground and ice and everything is good for people.
We don't normally take input for the public at this portion of the meeting. It's not a public hearing, but since you offered, and I know this is a bit of a surprise to a lot of people, and we do have some residents here, if you're willing, if there are some residents that would like to ask some questions, I'm more than willing to let you step up and.
Would you want me to let them use this mic?
Yes, yes, I would let them use the table. Others, or anyone? No?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure, if you just, name and address and.
Jamie McLean, Cherry Hill Drive. The lot that you guys have across the way from Ediville that was auctioned off not too long ago, is that going to be in addition to this at all, or is there separate plans for that?
I have no financial interest in that lot.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with this plan. Everything that we're speaking of, what you're from, sorry.
Jamie.
Jamie, okay, sorry. Everything we're talking about is on the existing Ediville footprint.
Okay.
Nothing on the other side of Pine or Rochester.
And then when you guys do the sidewalk, is that open to the public as well, or is that just for the board?
That'd be up to the chairman.
Mr. Fantasy? Normally, that's not.
Normally, it's just the board members and the committee heads, heads of departments.
Yeah, I think if you wanted to do something for the public at a different time, you could certainly.
Well, as Lynn mentioned during that, there is another walk that will take place with the state and all that as we move forward. Though there'll be opportunities, and plus, if you just reach out to us, I'd be happy to give you a personal tour.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm really nervous. Don't worry.
No worries. Take your time.
Becky Foley, Rochester Road. My question is, if any or part of this happens, will you be putting in sidewalks for the people that live in that area? Because we can walk on the roads without a problem, but if the traffic is going to be what it's going to be, how are we going to be able to walk on those roads?
Well, if you remember, well, maybe you don't, but years ago, I built sidewalks.
I know, I use them. I understand that.
And there was no sidewalks existing at that point, and I worked closely with the planning board at that time during the expansion in Ediville. And when we get involved with the traffic, and this is all part of, you know, mitigation, what they call a mitigation plan, and depending on the layout of the road and everything, we're things for safe walk, but you're also going to be, we're also creating additional walking paths that currently don't exist. So there'd be a lot of open space for you to walk with your family.
I'm not talking about there.
No, I understand, you're talking about.
I'm talking about like Rochester Road, Morrissey Boulevard, because we won't be able to walk those roads.
Well, I think, maybe I should let Bob address, you know, what you think the impacts for walking would be versus what it is today. I mean.
Thanks, sir. So that's a typical question, and that is one of the things that we consider during the planning process. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that anyone who is choosing to walk can do so safely. Traffic speeds are often a concern. We look at ways to make that, make people comply.
I know what it's like when all the things are, King Richard's Fair is going and Ediville is going, and we can't even get out of our driveway half the time.
Right.
We have to take backroads everywhere we go.
Right, right. And that's the reason that we have quantified things? We want to understand that. You live here, and hearing that is very important, because you deal with it, you know, in real time, so to speak. But we've now put a face on what the actual volumes look like, and during the process that we'll be undergoing with the town, we're going to take the kind of input that you're sharing with us now and try to incorporate appropriate responses to that in a so-called mitigation plan, right? So.
And I just wanted to mention real quick, just so you're clear, and the board and everybody here is clear at home, that Ediville's not going to overlap with King Richard's Fair.
No, I.
I just want you to understand that. And Ediville has never caused the traffic calamities that King Richard's has, and you have to agree to that. I mean, we've done a good job there. So, and we're very sensitive to that, and we've tried to be good neighbors. And a lot of people that live in the neighborhood have worked at Ediville, and we've reached out, and Brenda's always available, we can always take the calls if there's a concern. So we will continue that, and Bob and this team that I've put together, along with the boards, and that will come up, and their peer consultants, which are these people that we pay for, that they hire, to make sure that their issues are addressed, will address all those things. The last thing we want is uncomfortable neighborhood, if we want to, okay? That's what, that would be my response for today. Obviously, we will be advancing, and you'll have plenty of input, and we encourage that.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? All right. John, I think that's it. Mr. Dele Priscoli, anything else from the board? Mr. Fantasy?
Oh, good.
All right, thank you. We'll be in touch regarding a sidewalk.
And I just would like to say thank you again. Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you for letting us present tonight.
No, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you feel you need any more copies? Do you have one more copy? All right, we'll just give it a minute for people to clear out here. You appear to have lost our town administrator, so we'll just wait for Mr. Fantasy to reach All right. Next on our agenda this evening is our town administrator update. Mr. Fantasy?
Okay, I know it's late, it's 10 minutes of eight, so I'll be somewhat brief. First thing, I wanted to let the board know that the fire chief has been awarded a grant of $19,000 for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera, as well as a rescue chainsaw and various hoses, nozzles, and valves. And why is that important? It's because we would have to fund those ourselves without the grant. So this was a nice little Christmas gift that we got right before Christmas. I want to thank Chief Weston and his staff for putting together the grant application and following it through, and that's the first one. Second one, we're currently setting up times for the joint budget meeting to be held on Saturday, January 28th, 2023. It'll begin at 8:30, and it should end somewhere around 1 o'clock in the afternoon. The department has been very supportive in returning to this forum, which I understand was used successfully in the past.
It was, and please thank them for their cooperation. I know we all appreciate it.
I will, yeah. And the third thing is I have engaged the services of a part-time building commissioner while we search for a replacement for Paul Boucher, who left to go to another town closer to his home. The interim commissioner, his name is Rod Palmer, and I'll try and get him in the next meeting to say hello. He's a Carver resident and a semi-retired building commissioner for the town of Felment. So we're lucky to have him. He has a lot of experience, and he knows the town. So we're very excited about that, that we were able to find somebody so quickly. And the fourth thing, and this is kind of a New Year's gift, I just looked at emails and really quickly, and just got a notification that the town has been awarded a green community grant of $199,000. grant of $199,000.
Wow, right.
And that's to make energy-saving repairs to several town buildings, including the middle school and some in the library. And I'll have more next meeting, once I go through the list. There's about 10 or 12 things in which the money could be used for. And I want to give a shout-out to Wayne Weston and John Woods, Dave Seidenthoff, Tom Barton and others who took part in pursuing that grant, so thank you, everybody.
And please pass the board's thanks along.
A nice New Year's gift. So that's it for this update.
Could you, for the next meeting, do you think we could have an update on the North Carver Water District? It's been a while since we've heard anything, I think, and they must be moving along, certainly. So I think we could, I think that would be appreciated by the board. Are there any questions for the town administrator? All right. Mr. Hoffman?
I just had another, a quick question on the budget. So earlier, well, was it September, whatever? We had like a set schedule-type thing, a rough schedule of how the budget process, we pretty much on target.
Pretty much. We're still waiting, we're still waiting for DOR to certify the free cash that was filed on time. The DOR representative that we had went out on maternity leave. So Sue Moklin's been working with a replacement, and that replacement was out sick, like everybody else, for a couple of weeks. So it's still in the process. Everything's submitted, it's just waiting for them to certify it. So that's on that end. The budget process, I'm putting together the final to send out to the board members, as well as the finance committee, the request and the budget look at with a snapshot of last year and then the budget for this fall year, fiscal '24. So I'll get that out soon.
Okay, great.
So we're doing good.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Fantasy. Let's see. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There are none. We have the minutes of 12/20/22. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of 12/20/22.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstention wasn't there.
All right, thank you. Four in favor, one abstained, and we have the minutes of the executive session of 12/20/22 for approval and not for release.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstention.
Thank you. All right. Select board announcements. Mr. Carter?
I don't have any announcements, but I'd just like to wish everybody a happy New Year as we go into hopefully a healthy 2023.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart?
Nothing.
Mr. Hoffman?
Also would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year, and thank you.
Ms. Ewan?
Thank you. I just want to remind people not to forget Shane gives thanks our town's food pantry. Even though it's no longer the holiday seasons, they always need donations, and they do take fresh food. They have freezers and refrigerators, and it's definitely a worthy cause.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd also like to wish everybody a happy and prosperous New Year. Our next meeting, next Tuesday on January 10th, we'll have our ARPA meeting to discuss ARPA proposals, and our next regular meeting is on January 17th. I think all members of the board have copies of all the ARPA proposals. If you displaced them or you didn't get one, please contact Mr. Fantasy, because we probably should take some time to look them over before that day. Mr. Fantasy, the January 10th meeting, do you anticipate us being able to start that at 6 o'clock and have enough time to get through those proposals, or do you think we're going to need to alter that start time a little bit?
Yeah, I would like to start a little earlier so we don't go late into the night.
What time do you like to start?
The popping hens in, 5:30 would be fine.
Does 5:30 on the 10th work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll plan that meeting for 5:30. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor? Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.